I will now turn it over to Naldo. Naldo?
Good afternoon, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good afternoon. So this, I'll try to be quick with the presentations, there's several parts to it. The tunnel rehabilitation is, I'll go through it rather quickly because everyone wants to hear more about the Tunneltop Plaza and improvements in Los Olas. But just to give a framework where this project's at, the project is quite long, I'll explain the reason why that is. But it starts on say Row 5, US 1, from I-595 north to Broward Boulevard. But the heart of the project is that, if you see in the screen here, it's a square, orange square, which is the Henry Kennedy Tunnel, the Henry Kennedy Tunnel you see here, which is, provides access to US 1 underneath the New River and Los Olas Boulevard. It's also in the heart of downtown Florida Dale, such as historic sites as the historic Stranahan House, the New River, and Riverwalk as well. Next slide, please. Okay, so overall, the project has three main objectives. The first one, the first two are the FDOT-funded portions of them, and then the third one is a city-funded portion. So the first one is to rehabilitate the Henry Kennedy Tunnel to meet the latest federal, state, local standards and guidelines for architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical, and life safety. A tunnel's kind of a unique structure to a bridge, it's obviously life safety and the fire and incidents important. The second objective is improving safety and mobility on the US 1 corridor, which is why you saw it go, the project goes all the way from 595 up to Broward Boulevard. And the third, what we all think is really the exciting part of the project, is enhancing East Los Olas Boulevard as Southeast 6th Avenue, or more livable community, which is the Tunneltop Plaza. Next slide. So the FDOT's rehabilitation projects, what we're looking at doing is improving a tunnel. The tunnel was built in 1960 as a New River Tunnel, renamed the Henry Kennedy Tunnel back in 1986. There hasn't been any major rehabilitation since 1960. So this is the first major rehabilitation, there are only two tunnels in the state of Florida, this was the first publicly operated tunnel back in 1960. Really state of the art, but these are the improvements that are needed. Structural, removing portions of dilamended tiles, architectural, improving the buildings, replacing grades, mechanical is really important, the pumps, ventilation fans, replacing the lighting on the whole tunnel, and the life safety was also important. Next slide, please. Then the other objective, which is improving mobility, there's two components to it. First, we're gonna provide what's called adaptive signal control, or ATC systems along eight signalized intersection of US 1. What this have, what this does is allows for real-time adjustments of signal timing depending on traffic, so that improves mobility. Next slide, please. The second part of improving mobility is what we call Intelligent Transportation System, or ITS. As you can see in this slide, there is an existing ITS on I-95, 595, and Broward Boulevard. Missing link is US 1, which is the limits I mentioned before. And the idea is to have cameras, warning gates, camera, dynamic message signs. This all goes back to DOT's Regional Transportation Management Center, so we can improve traffic and inform the people who are traveling on US 1 in case there's an incident in the tunnel. Next slide, please. And this is the exciting part of the project, one of the most exciting part, is the intersection of Los Olas and 6th Avenue, or the Tunneltop Park. This just give you a view of the project area with the city's funding. This gives you a view towards the south, towards the river. You can see the runway directionals of Southeast 6th Avenue, that's a north portal you'll see there, north entrance of the tunnel, Los Olas Boulevard, and then Southeast 6th Avenue, and South, which becomes Southeast 4th Street underneath the parking area. You see the Icon Building and the ventilation buildings as well. Next slide. So this slide shows the limits of the improvements for the city-funded project. You see in gray is the 117-foot extension of the tunnel. Originally was 65 feet, but through our engineers, we're able to push that limit to 117 feet. That's a gray shape you see there on the slide. And the pink area is, this is all the other improvements, we're raising the intersection, providing decorative concrete, balder, we replace the signals from span wires to mast arms, pedestrian lightings, and so forth. Next slide. You can see here a quick summary of the city's contribution under the locally fund agreement, $10.6 million. It has its own financial project number. You can see where the funds came from, the city parks. There's improvements to site distance at that intersection, and of course, enhancement of the intersection itself with the 117-foot extension, the raised intersection, we're reconstructing the north ventilation building. We're improving not just the Tunneltop Plaza, but also the Lower Ward Riverwalk Plaza, and a whole bunch of landscape and hardscape that Brian will speak to. Next slide. And we've done quite a bit of community outreach and coordination. You can see the Tunneltop Project, the Tunneltop really became, came up as a concept in DEA, back then it was 65 feet. We were able to come and push the envelope and push it to 117 feet, and come up with different concepts that have evolved over several years through our public outreach, we've had two public meetings before the one we had two weeks ago. I've also presented to the commission, and we were fortunate to secure funding for the final design and construction back in January with the advisory board. Next slide. With this, I'll hand it off to Brian to speak more about the landscaping features and hardscaping for the Tunneltop Plaza and whole intersection. Brian?
Good afternoon, everyone. As everybody recognizes the theme that was finally concept in January was a estuary, environmental type theme that ties the Tunneltop and River, New River together. These are inspirational Tunneltop pedestrian-style flows and ebbs that will be provided within the concrete and such pavement for the pedestrians. And next slide. And this image here provides an overall rendering view of the tie of the Tunneltop to the north to the right, and the New River to the south through the Cheesecake, Icon, and Lower Ward, Stranahan plazas. The key features on here is decorative concrete integral, so there's durability for long-lasting. The removal of the majority of the pavers, but pavers are still needed for harmonization to the Riverwalk adjacent to the garage and cheesecake, the Icon, and then the Riverwalk donor program that is already established within the Riverside Hotel program in the cheesecake area, as well as down near the Riverwalk connection as well. The key features is to tie the Riverwalk together up to Las Olas and the Tunneltop area. There's multi-levels, artificial turf, circular spaces semi-elevated due to structural and access needs underneath for drainage, and the terrace areas as well, that will cut the vistas down to the New River. The actual fountain in the Icon, there's two fountains existing concurrently today. There's a long fountain and a shorter fountain, and as part of the concept, this is being reimagined to fit within the context of the concept.
Can I ask you a question on that? So, why are we going to the expense of removing the fountains that are there to replace it with this single fountain? What is the thinking there?
The thinking's to provide more pedestrian space and the evolution of potentially creating a better connection for the Stranahan House in the future. There was more pedestrian space and accessibility in the original concept, that's not being implemented here for like a gateway entry to the Stranahan House. So it was developed in the initial concepts by TBG with the two fountains and one being reimagined in a, you know, different fashion. There's one key point we have provided on the end of the fountain, this long oblique area. There's an opportunity to put some public art there, there's gonna be some bolting system and a simple urn, but that could be removed and put an art piece, and we're already putting lighting in there for that, so there's provisions for this, so.
So, sir, on the top part of that drawing, above the fountain, you're saying it's gonna create more of a pathway directly as an entranceway into Stranahan House?
Correct.
But my recollection is there's a wall there, so if you walk down that pathway, you're gonna hit a fence, because the entrance to Stranahan House is from the street, not from that pathway. Is Stranahan House planning on opening that area up?
There was discussions between TBG and Stranahan House's opportunity to work the gate system there, because currently they have the drive gate, and then they have a little pedestrian gate, and they would have a lot of better gathering space in the Icon Plaza as a smaller gateway, and it would be very minimal work that would need to be worked on their side and in the Plaza to create a gateway system. That was originally in the concepts, but not included at this time.
Okay, thank you.
The next slides are just images that go through the Lower Ward Plaza as a blow-up, so you can see it better with the north shaft, creating a focal area for, you know, events and such, Ben could easily sit there, or you could have some kind of announcement or kind of events and such there. The lawn is there for events to share with the Stranahan, as everything's going on with the program and the city renting that space, and we've provided as much visibility as possible to maintain the boat parade staging and such in this space. Next slide. The mid-part is the Riverside Hotel, Cheesecake, and Icon. This is just continuing the theme and reimagining everything to tie this Plaza together all the way from the tunnel to Lower Ward. You see there, the driveway for Stranahan is preserved, we're working on a little more access pull-off for their student program, when buses come, they have a very short area, a little bit longer area for them to gather buses and students as they visit at the Stranahan House. The Icon Fountain is shown there, and then the Cheesecake having more, a little more defined space than what they have today. Next slide. Last but not least is the Tunneltop space and the artificial turf and the terracing areas for gathering spaces. This is gonna be a possible good event space for overflow for events when Las Olas is actually closed down and such, to be the kind of head area for events and such, and maybe even type of evening events in the cooler seasons of, that can be, you know, scheduled throughout the year. Artificial turf is, like I mentioned, is slightly raised due to the geometry of the actual Tunneltop extension. The Tunneltop extension actually rises to accommodate the traffic, so this will be a, you know, a larger feature than more level at the pedestrian experience, so there's multi-levels of viewing and such, and then careful placement of plant material due to structural and wind-related concerns and such, so we've, you know, got our best to be able to maximize the space into the Tunneltop Plaza, providing the access, the access of ramps, steps, and providing, you know, a good gathering space during the day for lunches and evening events. Next slide. This is one of the original perspectives and the approved concept, as you see, there's some evolution we've had to provide due to utility constraints, right-of-way constraints. The Tunneltop design, it extends a little bit further, higher than what's shown in this rendering here, and the goal is, you know, the striping on the road has been toned down a little bit more, it'd be just a contrast in the road than color, so there's less distraction that's been coordinated with everyone for the striping plan and the turn lanes and such. Next slide. This is one of the other original terracings, the terracings become a little more formal, features more durable surfaces such as the white Portland cement that is durable, it does not have to be repainted, it just has to be cleaned up and scuffed and minor repairs. The wood and such has been removed from the project based on maintenance concerns, but there'll be level of the lighting at the base for other ambient light within the terrace for security purposes. Next slide. And this slide here is a view from the garage up level down at the Lower Ward. This is another rendering that was also in the original. Basic concept has been maintained of the artificial turf. We've worked out the elevation changes from the artificial turf down to the water taxi and created a more defined space and more, you know, spaces for waiting for the water taxi, that's one note I noted, noted out there, whenever I saw people gathering, there was really no space for them to sit waiting for the water taxi, so there's, the planter is turned into a seat wall type planter that's raised, so they can have more seating, and then the concept of the flowing concrete design flows down through the concept from the Tunneltop. Pavers from the Riverwalk tie in and create a small donor space to reconcile the donor program that the Riverwalk has in place. They have roughly more than 1,500 pavers already sold, but not etched, and maybe half of them have been etched, but most of them have been sold, as well as the banner lights and such in the Plaza are gonna be maintained in place except one, we're locating one next from the north tower down towards the water taxi for more ambient light. Next slide. I'll pass this back to Naldo.
Yeah, just quickly to wrap up the presentation. As some of you may know, the tunnel is eligible for listing on National Register of Historic Places. The extension of the tunnel with the Tunneltop Plaza obviously did have an adverse effect on that. So our team has been coordinating with Florida State, the State of Florida Department of Historic Resources, as well as the City Historic Preservation Board, in looking at how we can mitigate the adverse effects, so we're looking at documenting the history of the tunnel, as well as providing what you see here, the interpretive panels, that will talk about the New River and working with the Stranahan House, make sure the message on these interpretive panels, which would be placed at the north ventilation building in that area, are provided as part of this project. Next slide. And I'll just go quickly over the traffic control plan, and this is mainly for US 1, so I'll just run through this really quickly. We came up with five different schemes for controlling traffic, we do the rehabilitation of the tunnel and also the construction of the Plaza above US 1. One scheme is, the first scheme is looking at closing down one side of the tunnel and providing two-way, two-lane traffic on the south side of the tunnel, also this requires the closing of one lane in each direction. Scheme two would be what you see there at the bottom side of your screen, which is, traffic would be on the north side of the tube, or north side of the tunnel, and then we close the south side, this is for the rehabilitation, and to prep the walls for the loading of the beams for the Plaza. Next slide. The other schemes are, again, also closing down a single lane of US 1, but in this case, we're in scheme three, for closing the outside lanes, leaving the inside lanes open in their existing configuration through the tunnel, and then scheme four will be closing the outside, I'm sorry, the scheme three is closing the outside lanes, and scheme four is closing the inside lanes, and these different traffic control plans are important for the destruction of the tunnel that we have. Next slide. And then the last scheme here is a complete closure of US 1 and the tunnel. I wanna make sure I mention to those on the call that this is a very limited use here. Overall, the project's looking at two and a half years. The full closure of the tunnel, which will require a detour, and I'll show you that in a minute, we're looking at probably two or three weeks at most, and that will be done either tonight, we closure, weekend closure, or extended weekend closures. And that's needed for when we're wrecking the beams for the extension of the tunnel, you see that image on the lower left-hand side. We need to close off US 1, we do know the tragedy happened down south at FIU, so we can't have any traffic over live traffic underneath any construction of the extension of the Plaza. Next slide. And here you see an image of the detour we're looking at, where we do have these closures, again, in limited cases. We're using Southeast 7th Street, 3rd Avenue, and Broward Boulevard. The detour you see in front of you is one that's been used quite a bit on previous smaller rehabilitation, and also when they clean the tunnel almost on a monthly basis. So we coordinated this with emergency responders from the city, with Broward County Traffic, and Broward County Broward County Transit as well, so they're familiar with this scheme, and there has been no major concerns, objections. Obviously, we'll improve green time, so we minimize impacted traffic. Next slide. And the last slide here just kind of gives an overview of the construction costs, the total construction cost is $26 million. There's the tunnel rehabilitation, the ITS, which is over $15 million from DOT, and then the city's portions, which is $10.6 million you see there. We're completing the design, our schedule is to complete the design by the end of this year. The letting or bids go out will be in May of 2021. Construction is anticipated to start late summer, beginning of fall of 2021, and based on preliminary analysis, right now we're looking over two years, two and two and a half years for construction duration. But that's before we've included incentive bonuses for the contractor, which is expedite construction. That's it, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. We have one person who signed up to speak, Maggie Hunt. Maggie, are you there? Maggie?
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Hey, I just have a couple of quick things. I noticed in the 14, 15, and 16 slides versus the 16, 17, and 18 slides, the first three have more earth tones, and then the last slides are more white, and I'm just wondering from a practicality standpoint, to have that in the road, what that's gonna look like in a few years with, you know, cars driving over it and putting a lot of black spots and marks on it. I also wondered what happened to the large planter on the cheesecake corner? It looks kind of bare without it, I don't know, maybe, so I'm just curious why that left it from that viewpoint. That's like 17, I think, it just looks more like a sea of white cement and, you know, which.
Well, 17 does look significantly different than 15 and 14, you're absolutely correct.
And what do you think about the white on the roadway there with the cars?
Well, the thing is, the lighter the color, the less heat is absorbed by the pavement, and it won't be as hot, so.
What about like a gray, kind of a gray that's like a mid-tone, or, you know, like the color of all our other roadways, kind of?
I think it's gonna get gray, it'll get.
Yeah, but the thing is, it's gonna get gray and blotches, you know what I mean? It's not gonna be gray all over that would hide some of it, you know? Or make it look less dark, you know, less of a contrast that you might not notice, it'll be blotchy.
All right, we'll definitely bring that, we'll definitely consider that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Is there anyone else who has signed up to speak? Okay, there being none. Commissioners, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Commissioner?
I did, Mayor.
Go ahead, Steve.
Commissioner Maritas.
Go ahead, Commissioner Maritas, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I think it looks great, and I think they did take a lot of our feedback and input from last time, and they brought the cost down, and I'm excited about it, and I like the fact that it's longer, and good job, Steve and Ben for working on this, I'm sure, and I'm excited about it.
All right, great. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thanks Mayor, thanks Commissioner Maritas, I didn't really do much, this is really Commissioner Sorenson, but thank you for the shout-out anyway, I appreciate it. So just two things, something came up last night at my pre-agenda meeting, I thought it was a good comment, so I wanted to pass it along about the amount of artificial turf, and the concern that it's not so beneficial to the environment because of the amount of plastic that's involved, and this is a very open area that will get very, very heated, and that will not be so good for that particular environment, so I just wanted to ask the FDOT what they felt about that. I thought it was a good question. And then I also had a second question, when you mentioned the mitigation efforts concerning the fact that this is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. You think that the mitigation efforts will be enough that if we did decide that we wanted to see this on the National Register, that would still be a possibility? Thank you.
Which part would be in the National Register?
Well, actually, the presentation that we just heard said that the tunnel itself is eligible.
The tunnel itself, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is eligible for the National Register, however, with some of the changes that we're making above and around the tunnel, that might require some mitigation, and I think that's why we were just told that the Stranahan House was on board as a historic consultant for this. So I just wanted to know if those mitigation efforts were going to be enough that, if indeed the city decided it wanted to see the tunnel on the National Register, which is not a bad thing, and also, again, gives it a little bit of oomph as another site in our city. I was just wondering if those mitigation efforts were enough to still apply for that National Register?
Well, that remains to be seen.
Well, does FDOT have any idea if that was the goal of the mitigation efforts? Can they address that?
I came, well, I'm not the right person, there is, you guys can hear me, I'm not the right person to, because we have an environmental person that actually does all this coordination with the Historical Society and the and the State Historical Office in dealing with this mitigation process, and we are, and the reason for it, maybe some of you may not know, that we impacting some of the existing decor from the wall on the, because of the extension, so we required to apply and required to mitigate because of the adverse effect to the tunnel, and those mitigations are historical plaque, which given some information about the tunnel, which is, I'm not sure, and what is the whole detail, I know this is something that is get coordinated with those office and with our environmental office that does all that coordination, but you will be seeing the city, which is, there is a, an agreement that need to be signed by the city, and will have to go through the commission, I believe that is coming up to be in front of you for this mitigation plan that the city is responsible to maintain, and maintain basically what we say in those plaque, about the registering for the tunnel to become, that I'm not sure the process, how that goes. That probably is something that I can check with our environmental person, and probably I can go back and bring you that information to the city about how that goes into getting the tunnel register, which I don't know the full process on it, but but you'll see that there is coming a, an agreement that had to be signed, which is the department sign, the city sign, and also the State Historical Office sign also on that, to make sure that the responsibility of maintaining those mitigations. And so that should be coming up for the city to view.
Thank you. Fausto, if you could maybe get some of that information my way, I would appreciate it, because I know that this project actually did go to the city's Historic Preservation Board for review and comment, and I would imagine that the State Division of Historical Resources had some comments. They typically wouldn't give a blessing to a project unless they felt that. They typically wouldn't give a blessing to a project unless they felt that, you know, the right things were being done in terms of the resource itself. But my main question is with all of the mitigation and everything you've explained, is this tunnel still going to be, uh, eligible for, uh, application or listing on the National Register of Historic Resources? Places rather. That's what I'd like to just have the answer to.
I will get you that information.
No, I appreciate that. And then what, what's, what are your, what are your thoughts about the question that came up last night at my meeting? About the artificial turf and the plastic and the heat and, uh, just the overall environmental impact of all of that artificial turf?
Let me have Brian Short, uh, landscape or housecape architect to respond, uh, regard on that.
Thank you. We're working on, uh, the next gen style, um, artificial turf that it has a lot of the, uh, infill that creates a cooler environment. It'll actually have a cooler environment than what the initial studies. Where the first gen came out and the kids were falling and heat exhaustion as such, you know? This is a different type of, um, artificial turf in the third or fourth generation level. Uh, that will be implemented in here. It'll have a sand base underneath for soft, uh, you know, um, traversing. And, um, to speak with the plastic, I could double check if, uh, some of the recycled materials are now in, uh, in that process.
Okay, great. That would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie? Any comments? Not sure where he is. Okay, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, thank you. Heather, did you get a chance to say everything you wanted to? Just wanted to make sure. Okay, great. Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Thanks, Commissioners. Um, and, and thank you, FDOT and Fausto and Naldo and Brian, who've been just amazing. And, um, Mayor, I'd also like to say thanks Secretary O'Reilly, who's just been phenomenal partnering with us. This is, these are such complex projects and, you know, thank you, Secretary and the whole team. And then all our stakeholders in the community keep, uh, working together on this. And we have more work to do, obviously, but, uh, just, just appreciate it all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I do want to go back to what, uh, Maggie Hunt said. You know, slide number 17 looks completely different than the other slides. So which is it that we're going to, that you're proposing? Slide 17 or the, the, the pavement design in 15 and 16?
This is Brian again. Uh, the overall renderings are the, uh, you know, the evolved concept based on existing conditions and actual, the original concepts were focused on pavers. And that was the evolution from pavers to concrete. And to, you know, go on to the evolution of the colors, there's a little bit of, uh, change in palette of colors when you go to integral concrete. We're looking at more of a beige-ish type color for the roadway for the emphasis of the table topping. Uh, a gray would blend in and not have any kind of contrast. So, um, it's, you know, indifferent opinion, but then the other walkways, uh, the computer sometimes does not always represent the colors that are provided.
So, but the design itself is completely different too.
As in the, um, pavers layout a lot different than concrete work does.
Which is the concrete?
In the pedestrian zone and the actual, um, roadway.
Yeah, but which slide represents the, the latest iteration that you're proposing?
The overall renderings, the actual, uh, 3D type renderings are from the original concepts.
Right, but I don't have the 3D in front of me. So I'm just looking at yours, your slide presentation.
I think 17 is the newest.
Is 17 the newest?
Yeah. Brian, is that right? 17?
I think, yes, I believe that is 17.
Okay, now, earlier I raised the point regarding the, the fountain. Is that part of the city's expense or is that part of the state's expense?
Uh, right now in the estimates in the maintenance agreement, that's in the city's expense.
That's the city's expense?
That's falling into the icon space that is, uh, you know, looking to be, you know, transferred to the city.
Okay, so when I asked about the reason for, uh, uh, removing the existing fountains or replacing it with a different design, you said it was because you wanted to increase the pathway towards and create a better entrance way towards Stranahan, uh, Stranahan House. And, uh, uh, it sounds to me like this was done before Stranahan agreed to open up that area. So I'm trying to cut back on what the expenses are for the city. And right now I think those fountains are great. And it works well with the way Stranahan has its entry point. And I, you know, if we can save a couple of hundred thousand dollars on keeping the fountains where they are, I don't understand why we need to, you know, we need to change something that no one's really asking for. So, um, is that an integral, is the fountain designed an integral part of this, of this, uh, new reimagining of the tunnel top pedestrian plaza? Or is that something that can be, um, uh, can be changed going forward?
Uh, if that's something the desire of the city to maintain a rectangular, uh, shape, we could work something into a, a concept in that area. Uh, and, uh, you know, look at the cost savings of not, uh, demoing the existing and providing a new. But the idea is that, you know, is there's, you know, the concrete costs to kind of reimagine and tie everything together, uh, is still in that parcel of just the icon. You know, if you're focusing in that space, uh, just to tie the theme all together from the underlying concept.
I understand that, but, but I'm saying that to replace fountains is not cheap. Uh, you're gonna dig up everything. You're gonna have to redo plumbing. You know, you're bringing in new, uh, fixtures. And this is, you know, the question I asked today was the third time I asked the question as to why we're changing the fountains. And believe it or not, I've gotten three different answers as to why we're changing the fountains. One, I was told because it was going to improve the ability for the underground infrastructure to operate. But then I was told that's not the case. And then I was given another ti, another answer yesterday. Today you're giving me still another answer that it's really just for the purpose of providing a better pathway to enter Stranahan House, which has a wall in the very area that you're trying to create the pathway. And it doesn't sound like there's ever really been a finalized agreement with Stranahan House that they're going to really want to open that up. The history of Stranahan House has always been that they're trying, they try to, um, they, they don't see it as a place where they want to remain open. Like, I mean, I was on the commission back in 2003 when we, when Icon was first proposed. And one of the, one of the things they resented was the fact that Icon was opening up the area, uh, and exposing the Stranahan House to, to, uh, to a point where they felt uncomfortable. So before you go forward with this, I would think that we would need to know exactly what Stranahan House's, uh, agreement is rather than spending several hundred thousand dollars to do something that no one really wants. So I'm just adding that to our conversation today. And you're saying that the, um, that, uh, slide number 17 is the latest iteration? And that's going to be, uh, concrete and not pavers, correct?
As correct. And, and limited, uh, pavers for harmonization on the sides of the plazas where there's existing pavers to tie in. And, uh, some right-of-way, uh, you know, encroachments that, uh, we have to work into. It's pavers outside the right-of-way. We gotta, you know, tie the pavers into the edge of the right-of-way. So.
So, Mayor, can I inter, I, I hate to interrupt, but I want our record to be correct here. I don't believe 17 is the current design. I believe, I don't believe slide 17 is, is the current design. I believe that's where it started. I think in this presentation, what exists is slides 13 through 16 is where it currently is today. So I just don't want to keep going on this discussion thinking that we're looking at 17 and it is the most recent. I don't think it is. So can we just get some clarification on that?
So what is it? Is 17 the latest iteration or is that not the latest iteration? Sir?
Trying to pull up that, uh.
This is Naldo here. Uh, it's 13 is the latest iteration, right?
13 is the latest iteration?
Like 13 and then 14, 15, um, I think 16 are just smaller, more detailed. Look at them. So the ones that come in after 17 and so forth, those are the early renderings of, uh, that was presented previously, I think in January this year.
Okay, if we could just look to 17 for just a second though. 17, uh, shows a, uh, uh, shows that the surface of the roadway and the park are at one elevation. Is that still going to be the case?
Uh, due to the, um, current elevations, the roadway and the pedestrian area, the road is being raised to the curb height that is out there today. And it's a tabletop, uh, design for La Solis, uh, Boulevard from, uh, the western limit to the eastern limit.
So what is going to be installed in order to protect pedestrians from being run over by cars that are going to be going along La Solis Boulevard or Sixth Avenue? I don't see any protective device there.
If you look, if you look carefully, there are shadows for bollards.
Let me see. Well, I'm looking carefully. I see pedestrians.
Yeah, there are shadows in there for the bollards. Um, the uprights, you can't really see of the bollards, but you can actually see the little dark shadows.
So that's the only, those little, those things are going to be the protective device, the protective.
They're provided on a, um, six and eight foot spacing along both sides of La Solis as well as, uh, down on the, uh, curve from sixth to fourth at Stranahan. So that's the, uh, but that area down there is remaining, uh, more curved in the tabletop. So the area at La Solis is being tabletop. And these, you know, uh, areas, uh, you know, speaking of the colors and how it's flat, the tunnel top, uh, area has evolved due to the rise of the infrastructure underneath. So there, the whole artificial turf area is raised.
So, but I'm saying in terms of where the, where people are going to be walking, is there enough of a visual demarcation for a driver to know where the street ends and where the street begins?
Yes, the valley gutter will be a, uh, dark, dark gray, demarks the roadway versus the pedestrian zone. There's regular circulation for the crosswalks. So regular everyday, um, um, walking is intended to use the, um, crosswalks. It's not intended to be free-flowing, walking crossover for that. And the bollards are the, um, factor that, um, protect the pedestrians and the, uh, vehicular traffic. At, at event spaces, we're having this tabletop. You don't have the, um, curb level and everything for tripping hazards and such as if this area got closed down. So that's the benefit of the concept that was developed.
And you're comfortable that that's going to provide enough protection to pedestrians from vehicular traffic on La Solis Boulevard?
This is the same, uh, approach that was taken at the, um, A1A and the beach at La Solis. It is raised. There's planters and bollards and such that, uh, protect the, um, edge of the, um, road between the pedestrians and the, uh, cars. And the actual, um, La Solis is going to one lane to the westbound. The right lane will be, um, dedicated right north to.
Were you saying, wait, you're saying that, that La Solis is going to be reduced to one lane going west?
That is the, um, total vision through the traffic study and the total vision, um, looking to the east as the, uh, historical shop area is going to more of a, um, a two-lane with, uh, you know, I can't, I don't want to overspeak.
You know, Brian, I can't hear you. You're fading out. Can you, can you speak up a little bit?
The, um, the overall vision for the eastern historical shops is to tie in. And we've been working with, uh, the Cordino Group. Uh, Millleg is on that team. But the idea overlying is that the east would transform to a, uh, two-lane. That is not solidified at this point, but that's, uh, the vision, uh, that's moving forward and grasping, uh, uh, in the concepts that are working for the whole corridor. So that was the reasoning of, uh, you know, putting the westbound, um, to one lane.
That's based on a, that's based on something we haven't even approved yet.
That's part of the, um, traffic study and then the concept from the beginning.
Mr. Mayor, Ben Rogers?
Yes, Ben.
So on slide 13, I think, uh, what Brian's trying to share is if you look at the darker camouflaged area close to the artificial turf, uh, on the tunnel top extension, on both sides of that, um, is a parking lane. And so in the middle of intersection, there's no parking lane. So it's historically been two lanes in the middle of intersection. But on both sides of the tunnel, it is a parking lane. So there's only really one through street in that intersection. And so what we're looking to do is make modifications that as you are driving westbound on La Solis, when you reach the tunnel top, if you want to turn, the parking lane would be, um, available to become a turn lane and turn right to go north on federal highway. Or you go straight through the, the center lane, through the intersection to the other side of the tunnel top. And once again, there'd be a parking lane on the curb lane. So it's not necessarily reducing the lane because majority of the time the, there are parking lanes on the curb lane.
But, but that, that gray line, that gray, um, that gray marker that's around the, on the right-hand side where it says artificial turf, what does that designate? Is that showing where, where, all I'm see, all I'm afraid of is that cars that are going west are, are going to be bottlenecked at that intersection because they're now being squeezed into one lane. Do you not see that as?
Yeah, so I totally understand the concern, uh, but, but as discussed, the majority of that traffic right now is already in one lane because the curb lane, um, during the preceding blocks are all parking lanes. So during your normal business hours, there's only one through traffic lane and the right curb lane would be your parking lane. Um, and for your question about the bollards, if you, if you revert back to slide eight, there's, um, not a very detailed sketch, but a sketch there that does show, um, some of the bollards and, and the delineation between the, the traffic and the pedestrian areas.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I don't have a question. You made a comment earlier. I just want some clarification for my own understanding. When you were talking about how you've gotten three different versions of the, uh, waterfall or?
Reasons why we had changed that, why they were changing the fountain design.
Right. And in your third scenario, uh, and not questioning, I'm just saying, you, you made a comment about Stranahan House not wanting to be open or I would say public if I had to guess what you were trying to say. Being that Icon was supposed to open it up. So can you expound more on that Stranahan statement? Because we have invested so much money opening that little area between Ward, Stranahan, and the final phase of the, uh, Riverwalk, um, and even, uh, this, uh, Ben Swanson, uh, coming back, uh, putting the rails up so people wouldn't fall in the water, you know? So I mean, we've invested so much down there. Is, is that really the intent of Stranahan House? Not to, to be public or open?
Well, so if you look at the Riverwalk side, you'll notice that the design, the design, there's a gap between the, um, the boardwalk that, that's on this, that runs alongside of the, uh, Stranahan House and the actual Riverwalk. They refused to have us go right up against their property. So there's an example of their wanting to be separate from the public rights of way. In this particular case, what I was referencing was back in 2003, 2004, when the, when Icon came before the commission. Um, one of the things that Icon proposed with these fountains that would open up the area to give, to let people know we have Stranahan House, like it was the best kept secret in the city. Right. And, right. So, and I, I thought that was great. And, uh, but there was a lot of pushback from the folks at Stranahan House. But this is 17 years later, and so I'm not going to attribute the same philosophy here today as they had back then. But as, um, as I look at the aerial view of, of, uh, Stranahan House, there's still a, there's a wall that exists in the very pathway that's being proposed. there's still a, there's a wall that exists in the very pathway that's being proposed to open up Stranahan House. And I'm saying, well, if you're going to have a pathway to, to give greater visibility for Stranahan House, you have to get Stranahan Houses buy in to this idea. Because here we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to change fountain configuration when they may not even be interested in this. Because right now, I think the fountain is great.
That's what I wanted to hear.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, if I can add just a little clarity on that. Having litigated the case you're referring to, towards the end of the case in two thousand fourteen, the intent became through the development agreement with the Icon to open up that plaza. That was a large component of the project being able to go forward because they wanted the opening and the exposure to the street level of Stranahan House. The way the original building design had it, it really shielded Stranahan House and was all very hard to see from the street level. So the intent, although it was litigated and almost forced upon them, but the intent was to open up that plaza so that there would be greater visibility of Stranahan House. And towards the end of the litigation, that, that was the intent going forward and still is. Because we're, we're about at the tail end of negotiating the drainage easement and the, um, the, the other easement that we're transferring.
Okay, but, but, but today, there's still that, their gate and that hedge that, that blocks that whole entrance, that whole vista.
Correct, knowing they should absolutely be consulted.
Right, so they have to be, so why are we spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to redo the waterworks there when they may, they may not be interested?
No, absolutely correct.
That's all.
Right, and that's what I wanted you to clarify, that's all. And I saw the same thing, I just don't understand it either, so we will get an answer, right?
Yes, we will get an answer.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, um, very good. Thank you so much for your presentation. It's an exciting job. I wish it could be done sooner than later. But we've been talking about this for a number of years and I really appreciate FDOT participating and partnering with the city. And thank you, Chris, for all the work that you and the staff has been doing to move this project forward. Okay, um, city manager reports, do you have anything to report on?
Yeah.
Anything going on in the city in the last three weeks?
I've got a couple, and maybe as we talk through the balance of our time together this afternoon before we go to the evening meeting. I would like to give a couple of reports, maybe then we do the CRA meeting, then I need to come back and do a shade meeting dealing with some unsolicited proposals.
Okay.
And the city attorney has a couple of items as well. So let me start with the, the one that I think everybody's aware of. I talked to, to you all individually about it yesterday, I just want to bring it up here just so it's on the record. That Friday, we got a call from the State Department of Environmental Protection saying that they were wanting to see our amended consent order on our agenda for consideration tonight. If I take you back in time, we agreed to a consent order with the state. And that has been suggested to be amended based upon the discharges of the sanitary sewer system into George English Lake, the Tarpon River and the Hammerschick Canal. When they first brought that consent order forward, it came with just the short form, which was the, this is what has occurred, this is what the fine will be. I can tell you, we've been successful in negotiating back the possibility of an in-kind project into that consent order. So in order to meet the state's deadline, so that there's not any future threat of litigation one against the other or vice versa, I do need to bring that forward tonight at the evening meeting for your consideration. So I just wanted to put it on the record here and let you know that we'll have that walk-on item tonight. And I'd be happy to take any questions if there aren't any now, or I can take them tonight during the item when we hear it at the six o'clock meeting.
Any questions at this point, or do you want to save them until later?
No questions, but I do want to make a comment to, to Chris, you're echoing when you speak.
I think if you hold the microphone closer.
If I hold it closer, is that, oh goodness.
That's much better.
Okay. Did I come through on that last topic? I don't need to redo it, correct?
You're good, that's why I made that comment, you're good.
Got it, okay.
Anything else?
I will save then the rest for when we are in a shade meeting. Let me turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, there were a couple of items that I wanted to bring to your attention. I think I spoke to some of you individually, two issues. One, the city commission had directed me to look into potentially amending or modifying restrictions on leaf blowers in the city. Currently, we have two ordinances that touch upon the subject matter. One, we do have an ignore noise ordinance, prohibitions on such use from seven AM to seven PM during the week. And on Saturday and Sunday from eight AM to six PM, there's the. Those are the restrictions currently in place. There is also another provision with regards to the prohibition, obviously, of throwing or causing any discharge of materials, including grass clippings and things of that sort within our sewers and gutters and storm, storm drains. There was some talk about either a full prohibition of gas blowers or modifying the times. We did find one other city in Florida, the town of Palm Beach, that does have an outright restriction on gasoline powered leaf blowers for properties consisting of less than an acre. Otherwise, the other cities have ten, have had a tendency to just regulate times of operation. For example, Sanibel has nine AM to four thirty PM as the permitted times Monday through Friday for, for operation of these materials. So we just, we have an ordinance primarily, proposed ordinance primarily drafted, but we need some guidance from you as to whether we want to just modify the current times we have or whether we want to go for a full prohibition and any conditions or exceptions on that.
Does anyone have any comments on this? Because I know I have a few things I'd like to say.
I, I do, Mayor, this issue was brought up by district as well. And my concerns for neighbors were really more about the times. I mean, the gas blowers are loud, but I think if we could at least start with modifying the times, that may be a good place to start and see how, how that goes. Obviously, we should not be discharging it into our storm drains as well. So to make sure we have that on the books or penalties or whatever. Thanks.
Anybody else, anybody else would like to add to this conversation?
I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Marita said. Plus, I hear a lot of complaints about how everything is just blown into our waterways and canals in District Two. And that also compounds the problem in the quality of the waterways. Thank you.
Well, I think that's been, that was the, what, what started this whole conversation. I know that I've been hearing for years and watching it myself. When I see these maintenance fellows that do great jobs at, you know, landscaping, but when it comes to getting rid of the debris and the clippings, it goes right into our sewer drains. And, you know, we, we already have bad problems with drainage when it rains. And all this is doing is making it worse. And I know other cities have banned leaf blowers completely. There are other ways to clean these things up. They have vacuum sweepers and things like that. But the reality is that if we're truly going to be a city that, that is trying to maintain a proper ecology within which we live and, and spending hundreds of millions of dollars on, on stormwater drainage systems, a simple fix that helps prevent clogging could easily be obtained by our outlawing. So, I mean, I think we need to have a healthier conversation regarding this. I know it's going to upset a lot of people, but I also know it's going to make a lot of other people very happy, knowing that they don't have to listen to these blowers. And as far as I'm concerned, it saves us a lot of time and expense in maintenance cleaning these drains out. Anybody else like to add to that?
I just wanted to comment, and it's not so much that I oppose these blowers. I know when we started down this road, it was about the clippings going into rivers and canals and, and some, some, some drains, drainage, stormwater drains. However, not every part of our city has rivers and canals. And I bring this up to say that when we move forward to do this, to protect our most precious environment, our waterways, you'll be including other areas where this may not apply. Or it could be, as Commissioner Marita said, just the noise piece of it. What bothers me with these blowers, more so than anything that anyone's mentioned, and not to say that my concern is any greater than anybody else's. The, when I see these lawn men or landscapers, I just can't understand for the life of me why they mow my neighbor's lawn and then blow the trimmings and clippings over to my lawn or to the middle of the street. Or if we're cutting the medians in, um, um, on our major streets, they're blowing, you know, the, the stuff just to the, to, to the other side. So I don't know if we will ever get a, get a grip on it if people aren't going to go back to rakes. And then if we do, uh, happen to, to make this a ordinance or law, I mean, how, how are we going to really enforce it? Because right now, I can have a party at a, well, not now, when we get through this phase three. I can have a party in a, in a, um, in a timeshare, and the noise gets too loud, code will come out and put the meter on me. If you don't catch me when the music's up loud. You know, to me, I, I, I want to know if we can really regulate this if, if, if we do it. And I think it's needed, especially for our, our, our rivers. And if people are complaining about noises, we shorten the timeframe, they can use them. But they're blowing clippings all over the place in the city.
Well, that's the point.
That's just the new tool.
They're causing algae blooms, you know, this whole thing of trying to, you know, we've got to, we've got to stop dancing around the issue. I really think we need.
Well, I'm not dancing, but go back to. There was something earlier that you guys said, and that's, and I'm saying we're going to include other parts that don't have rivers. And we're talking about polluting our rivers. We talked about docks, we talked about docks earlier. You talked about docks extensions earlier. And you said, um, they're located in certain districts. So you excluded other parts of the city that wouldn't have docks extensions. So here, I'm just saying, when we get these orders together, do we look at where it doesn't impact, uh, uh, neighborhoods so that we apply this, this ordinance? Fairly, because everybody didn't have a North Fork or, or South Fork or a Tarpon or Middel or one of our, our, um, Venice of Americas trinkets here. So I know what we're trying to do in terms of the waterways and the pollution, which has probably got another fifteen things to go along with it. But this is, we're going to start here. But as we do it, let's look at and see how we can, you know, capture what Commissioner Marita has said, what I'm talking about in terms of, if I don't have a river, why am I telling the lawn man in a certain neighborhood that he can't blow? Or can blow? Or blow after these hours or before these hours. So I think we just need to look at it and make sure it applies so that we capture our intent of the environmental negative piece that is having on our waterways.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Mayor, I'm just, I'm just doing some research on, on different ordinances across the US. Are you, are you suggest, so there's various types of leaf blowers. So we can have a combustible engine, gasoline powered, you can have battery powered. What, are, are you suggesting banning outright or banning just combustible, gas powered?
I'm suggesting that we ban leaf blowers regardless of their source, whether it be gasoline or whether it be electric. And the main reason is because every time I see leaf blowers in use, they're always blowing the, their, the clippings into, into our storm drains or into our rivers or into whatever waterway we have. Not every, you know, neighborhood has a waterway, but they certainly have a storm drain. And this continues to exacerbate a problem that we continue to throw money at without realizing that there could be a, a simpler and cheaper way to help us as we're trying to move towards a, a better drainage system in our city. Both drainage and pollution come from these practices. And I put it on the table a few weeks ago, the city attorney has done some research. We don't have to make a decision today, but I'm just saying, I'm going to bring it back again. And I, and I, I think I had encouraged you all to, you know, go out to the community and talk this through so that we could get some, you know, popular feedback as to which, which direction we want to go into, but.
And what, Mayor, what, what if we ask the, the landscapers about a vacuum? You know, you push it all in one place, then you vacuum it up.
Well, a vacuum is a. Go ahead.
Because if, if we, if we put the orders in play and we can't get in your backyard to see what they're doing, you know, how do we really make this work so that we can protect our precious waterways?
Well.
There has to be something.
Well, the thing is, we, we can't be everywhere. So certainly, if you're using a leaf blower, we'll hear you, okay? So that's the biggest clip that, that you're using a leaf blower. And if you're trying to hide from us, you know, it's going to be hard, hard to escape the noise. So the point is, if we had, I mean, you mentioned rakes, I mean, that's a.
I have one of those, by the way.
Get a lot of use, but, uh, but all I'm saying is, we need to really seriously think about this. And we can, we can discuss it at a later time, and I appreciate the city attorney bringing it up again. But at some point, we really need to make a decision. I think ultimately, we're going to get to that point where, you know, if we're serious about keeping our waterways clean and our storm drains clean, we really need to make a, an important decision here at the commission level.
Mayor, I think it'd be helpful if we continued down this road to explore options and city attorneys do, do some research on this.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, because I was riding down the street the other day and there was a, in Flagler Village, there was one of the, um, the multifamily units, and it was late. And the guy was pressure cleaning, and he was pressure cleaning everything from that garage and everything from that sidewalk right into our little stormwater drain. Because it was conveniently located where all the water just drained to by design. But we weren't looking, and there's no canal, there's no river. He's just pushing leaves down the drain. So we got a lot of.
There you go.
So I'm saying, so and I saw another guy, you know, at a restaurant, pressure cleaning, it looks like grills from the ovens and the mats are on top of a storm drain. This is just riding around the city because of how the water drains.
And that, that's.
You got to guide us to a maintenance, just like a landscaper or anybody else. And when no one's watching, they're going to use the best avenue possible to rid their waste while nobody's looking at them. So we can put it in play, but how do we really make it stick?
That's, that's the key issue is enforcement, because all the examples you've just provided, Commissioner, are actually prohibited under section twenty five, one, four. But it comes down to enforcement and usually it's complaint driven, because as the mayor indicated, we can't be everywhere all the time. So from that respect, I think Commissioner Glassman, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Glassman had suggested to me a while back that under that section, it does not include waterway. So we can certainly add waterway to that list, so that will help.
Yeah.
Obviously, increase enforcement. And then on the, on the, the leaf blowers, we'll, we'll, I guess we'll keep tinkering with it and see what, uh,
Okay.
what we can do.
Okay.
The other issue is, as you may be aware, the city of Weston filed a lawsuit declaratory judgment and injunctive relief suit against Broward County, dealing with amendment two that's coming up on referendum for the November third election. I wanted to get a feeling from you if you all have an interest in joining that litigation to the extent we can. Although we are the beneficiary of whatever the result will be from that litigation. The theory is that if more cities join the lawsuit, it'll have more of an impact. So before I can proceed, I would need a consensus from the commission as to whether to. As to whether to uh explore our ability of joining that particular litigation.
Does anyone have any comments? I personally support it, but what do you?
I support it.
I support it.
Okay.
More.
There you go.
All right, let's do it.
Thank you very much.
No, Alan, just so I'm clear, what are the next steps with the leaf? What are you bringing back to us and when?
Well, I can, we can certainly bring back an amendment to section twenty five fourteen to add waterways. Um the penalties are, we could look again into the penalties. Uh I think that it's pretty much a code enforcement issue and it follows our our normal schedule of fees and things of that sort, but we'll look into that. Uh as to section seventeen seven, dealing with uh the the yard maintenance, equipment and power tools. Um again, we can suggest additional times, but until I know for sure whether we want to do an outright ban. Or whether we want to tweak the times, there's not a whole lot we can do. We've looked at as many jurisdictions as possible in Florida. Um you know, we have the, everything's on the table. If we want to go completely ban uh the that equipment, we can, we can go to electric, we can go. But again, it doesn't. When you go to electric, it doesn't solve the problem of the uh the grass clipping, cl- clippings getting into areas it's not supposed to. So. Um there's not a whole lot more research we can do. It all comes down to what we want to do.
So so Mayor, I'd say let's let's explore the ban. I mean, that's where where you're heading.
Well, that's ultimately where I'd like to get to. But again, I want to, I defer to you folks to reach out to our constituents and. Bring it up at a meeting and just get some feedback. And listen, I'll bring it up at a future meeting. Alrighty.
Mayor, can we try to understand a little bit about maybe the economic impact um of for the businesses involved? I mean, do we know how much these vacuums are? The commercial vacuum versus the commercial leaf blowers? That may be helpful and maybe obviously we've phased it in over a period of time. Um I I do think it's a good idea to switch to the vacuum system for a variety of reasons with. A shortened time period, or maybe they're they are more quiet than than the other ones.
We can phase it in, we can phase it in, certainly.
Understanding the economic um impact to our small.
Sell more vacuum uh leaf collectors.
I mean, this is a tough time for our businesses, so I just want to be sensitive.
I a hundred, I agree with you a hundred percent. Um I'm not saying we do it today, but at some point we need to get there because. Um even though, even though COVID is impacting our economy, um we don't want to compromise the um. The the quality of our waterways anymore than we have. And if there's a way that we can reverse what we have been doing over these last several decades. Hopefully, we can begin, you know, this is the one place where we can begin that process.
Do you think we could start with a small step of maybe just changing the times? That we allow the leaf blowers, because that was the main concern brought to me. So that might be an easier fix than changing from, you know, to the vacuum system.
What times are you thinking? I mean, most.
I think Sanibel, Sanibel may have had a good a good model that Alan and I were discussing. I know West Palm banned them altogether, right? They were, they were more the vacuums. And I think Sanibel had a a shorter timeframe that we could have looked at. Do you have that?
Sanibel, uh the Sanibel permitted them from the hours of nine AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Saturday.
And so those are the only times you could use it?
Yes. Nine to four. Nine to four thirty, Monday through Saturday, with no, no use on Sunday.
Well, again, it's not just, it's not just noise pollution, it's, you know, water pollution. So um we can start with the noise aspect. And um and consider limiting the the timeframe in which within which uh leaf blowers can be used. But I mean. It's really not getting to the point where we really need to get, where we really need to go. So um you know, just doing.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you on the vacuums. I I think just changing it may be a little easier than totally implementing the whole vacuum system citywide and. I don't know if we could find any grants or something that may help help offset the cost to these businesses. Um but I that just might be a shorter win. Do we restrict fertilizing during the rainy months? In our city? I don't know if we do, but I do know other cities restrict the use of fertilizer on lawns.
We do. We've already done that.
Yeah.
Fertilizer thing, if you're on the waterway, you restricted use of fertilizer during the summer months.
All right, just checking. All right, thanks.
Alrighty. All right, uh any further business of the commission this afternoon? All right, so we'll move into the CRA meeting.
So yeah, just before we do that, uh mayor and the commission, so we can officially, I think, end the the conference meeting. We can move to CRA. I sent it a a new invite for the shade meeting to each of the members of the commission, the city attorney and the court reporter that will be there. So. If you'll just uh look in your inbox or have your staff look in your inbox after we're done with the CRA meeting, so that everybody doesn't have to fall off this call that we're on now. Um we will remove ourselves and go to that uh newly created meeting to have the uh the shade discussion.
Okay, all right. So the conference meeting is now concluded. Thank you very much, everybody who's participated. Um we now move into our CRA meeting. Uh Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Maritas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis.
Yes, thank you so much. Uh we uh move on to M one, motion to approve minutes of our last of our September first twenty twenty CRA meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Ma- Mayor, I would move the the minutes, but I want to um remind you that I asked for a moment during the CRA to 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 make a presentation. Uh it's CRA related.
Sure.
And uh and I'm gonna use a a few staff members in that, but I'll move that motion so we can uh move forward. I'll move.
All right, when we get through with the motions, then I'll sir, I'll give the floor over to you and I'd be happy to have you make uh whatever presentation you would like. Sure.
Thank you, sir. It's a good one.
So motion uh has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Uh yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis.
Uh yes, and M one is approved. Move on to M two, motion approving a forgivable loan in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand dollars to uh. Juni Investment Group LLC for Donna's Caribbean Restaurant located at twenty twelve Northwest Sixth Street. And delegating authority to the executive director to increase the award to the full allocation of three hundred twenty five thousand dollars, subject to satisfaction of certain conditions. We have one person. Who has signed up to speak. That's Dr. Pamela Bees- Beasley Pittman. Uh are you on the phone?
She's there. We just have to recognize her.
Okay. Hello?
Hang on just one second, Mayor. Her name disappeared.
Did she drop off?
It appears as the the call dropped off. I was just waiting to see if her name came back up. Um we recognized her and we're just waiting to unmute. And it appears as though she's fallen off, so.
All right, if she should call back in, then we'll.
Would you like to go out of order and handle the next?
And 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 actually, I probably can help a little bit, Mayor, if you will.
Yes, sir.
I've uh I know we kicked this item um back uh for uh input from uh the HOAs, in particular hers, because it is directly impacting um that neighborhood. Uh it's one street over where I live, so it's gonna impact me as well. Um they had three items that they wanted to to uh um discuss and give um. Options to the uh developer. He hasn't agreed to those three things. Um I think they just want to publicly embrace the project with those three uh um. Suggestions they've made. I don't think it's gonna help the traffic there. If you've ever gone to DSD and made a right turn, we're talking about that street. My street where you've been there before when we lined up a parade and the street just west of that. Um uh so. It's a tough street to try to bring together and the major concern was traffic going back into that neighborhood. Uh was was the real concern. So they're gonna use different mechanisms to try to push it back out onto Sis Trump. It's gonna be a a a another nightmare, but. I think we need the project. I think the project brings what the community wants, uh uh another restaurant, another choice, uh the demand is there, the want is there. And if you look at the history of the restaurants that we do have in that corridor, um they are longstanding, thirty plus years from the average takeout, the Bettys. Uh Bee Gees, uh and I mean, the names just go on of those Skinner's restaurant. Those restaurants have been around since since I can remember and. That's how welcoming and that's how much the need is there uh for these type of venues. So. Uh I'm sure Pam will come back on like she did before, just to give you her feedback from as the HOA uh president, but I think we want to move this project forward.
Okay, all right, we can do that. All right, based on that representation, do I hear a motion to approve M two? Second? Commissioner McKenzie, was you seconded?
We got, we.
I did.
Okay, great. All right, please call the roll.
Mayor?
Mayor? Yeah?
Do we have anything in supporting back backup, any kind of letter of support from the neighborhood? Is there anything that? I didn't see anything in the backup or minutes from a meeting or like we've had before on this item where we showed minutes of meetings with the neighborhood. I. I don't have anything. Is there anything that shows official support of this project?
Well, if you remember, if you remember the history of this, um it came up once and it came up right before the HOA was going to have their meeting.
No, I I got the history, trust me. I I I read all the documents. I'm just wondering if we have anything updated that shows us everything's resolved. Here's a support letter from the neighborhood. We're good to go. We're working it out. It's fine.
I think that's what Dr. Beasley Pittman was going to do today, was going to represent uh the uh represent the association and. And I think the uh Commissioner McKenzie has uh clearly been in touch with them, so he's representing that there is, there is a a. Approval of this project with the modifications that were recommended. So that's the reason why we're going forward.
And at at two, at two oh seven, I texted her, are you ready to move forward on this Donna's project? She texted me back. Yes, we are the membership. Um she said, uh, we are in agreement. And then she was trying to get back home in twenty minutes to get there, which we gave her plenty of time with our conversations on the other items to to get home. So I think it's, it might just be a technicality. I'm gonna try to reach her on the phone so we can satisfy um. Uh Vice Mayor's uh um request for the backup.
Okay, but she just texted that to you?
Okay, so we can, yes, she texted that to me at two thirty something. So she was in agreement to move it forward.
Okay, all right.
Now, I don't know if there's a letter there, important, but I'm gonna call her now and try to.
All right, well, while you're doing that, why don't we just hold that in abeyance right now and move on to M three and uh give you a couple of minutes to get in touch with her? Does that sound good to everybody?
Mm hmm.
Okay, so motion of M three, mo- motion approving a services agreement between the city of Fort Lauderdale and the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency?
Ma-
Yes, sir.
I'm 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 sorry. I have her on the phone. Um she had to log off, so uh I'm gonna put her on speaker. You got, we can communicate with her.
Okay.
All right, just give us, hopefully this can work. Um Dr. Beasley?
Yes.
You have.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to log on this phone. This way I was on a um I had to leave this meeting to go on to another meeting, but um is there a question? For me?
They wanted to know if we were in support and and we were okay moving the uh project forward from the HOA perspective.
Yes, um we did meet, we had um a detailed meeting and we are in um support of the project. Our initial concern was that traffic and we have spoke with um on the town division and we have come to a solution for it. Um there's an agreement for um traffic commerce, so that's the part that we're looking forward to. We are in support of what we're doing.
All right. You heard it there, Vice Mayor, public.
I always like, I always like to hear that the neighborhood is in support. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so we'll move forward on M two. Uh please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Thanks, Ben. Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis.
Yes, and M two is approved. Good luck, folks, and can't wait to uh visit the new restaurant. Uh okay, back to M three, motion approving a services agreement between the city of Fort Lauderdale and the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency. Do I hear a a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know that um we're getting to a point where funds are diminishing. Is there a possibility that coming up at a meeting soon uh from Clarence, we can get a. Financial update in terms of exactly where the finances are right now in the CRA, what kind of money is left, uh what we anticipate, just get a a nice report on where we are and where we're going.
So Vice Chair, we we can certainly do that. Um. That's probably something that would be uh better scheduled for a future conference meeting, so we can go into detail with it. We tried to update you briefly today by email, so I don't know if you had a chance to. To spot that email or not, but we uh we will schedule um an item so that you can be briefed on on the status of the CRA.
That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm good. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, well, that's an important question to ask, because that's always a moving target as projects. Um we commit ourselves to to uh to certain projects and uh sometimes they don't materialize, so that puts money back in the kitty. So I think it's a good, good question going forward. All right.
It's a great question. I just don't, I just think we uh shouldn't say diminishing, and I don't want to put words in the in the Vice Mayor's mouth. Because I think uh Mayor just hit it. Uh we approve projects and the intent is to deplete. Each fiscal year until we sunset. Um and get as many projects as we possibly can on the street thing if we got the uh request of the Vice Mayor of. For Clarence to come back and explain, you know, um the financial piece, uh how it works and what is left and what's going to the next fiscal fiscal year, uh what projects are still holding. Funds that haven't come out of the ground yet, and what projects have, uh like you uh indicated, a mayor have terminated, and then that money goes back into the pot. So I mean, that'd be real good and educational to uh to to see that, you know, on an ongoing basis as we. Rapidly approach the uh the sunsetting of the uh of the um of the CRA. And I think our staff has come up with something that is going to maintain us. Uh many years after the CRA is gone. He's mentioned it to us before. I don't know if we really listened and 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 paid attention to that little piece that they created. That's gonna sit there um and be there when the CRA is sunsetted uh with dollars in there available for for future projects.
No, understood. And and by the way, the definition of diminishing just means make or become less. That's all I meant by that.
Oh, I know what the de- definition is, but sometimes, especially in the CRA, uh there's such a um stereotype uh of 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 the many things, so my, it wasn't for you, that's why I said. I I re clarified it, uh not to take away from what you were asking, but um not to send a signal out there to someone who doesn't have Webster's dictionary sitting right at their their fingertips or don't understand. Uh the denotation or the connotation of what we uh can derive from diminishing.
All right, very good.
Sir.
So uh has the.
It has. We just got to call the roll.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Debbie Stephen, we 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 did it. Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis.
Yes, and M three is approved. Okay, Commissioner uh McKenzie, the floor is yours.
Uh thank you so much, and I want to thank my uh my colleagues as well, but uh last uh week, uh Wednesday, I got a uh a text. Uh from our CRA manager, Clarence Woods, uh and he was sharing some information with me that I thought was um. Worth sharing with my colleagues. And when I further uh listened and and looked at what he was sharing with me, um it is a first. A first uh in the history of our CRA uh to receive this award that I'm gonna uh share with you in a moment. Um for a commercial project in the CRA. Uh the last time we got an award like this, uh Mayor, you were probably uh just. The last time we got an award like this, uh, Mayor, you were probably, uh, just in your first year in two thousand and three, when we got it for the residential piece of infield housing. Those would be the houses, uh, that DeAngelo, uh, built on Fifth Street, um, uh, the house that, uh, uh, former Commissioner Bobby DeBose lives in, those houses over in that area. Uh, we won what, what they called the project of the year for residential in the early two thousands from the Florida Redevelopment Association, the FRA, located in Tallahassee. And that's all the CRAs in the state of Florida. They picked a project that is the project of the year and this year, I, I was so excited for this particular project because of how it started, um, some of the challenges we had getting there and then as the project, uh, began to develop, uh, we had some, um, some bumps in the road, but because the project was A, asked of that owner to do by our CRA, B, they thought of a need for that community and that historical building that was once owned by, you know, one of the pioneers of Sis Trunk, um, they just took their time to, to, to get it right and we ran into a bunch of, I, I think, um, obstacles you often do in renovations. I mean, you look at some of the things that we do from the city, from the swimming hall of fame, the parking lot, or just renovating, uh, these offices, uh, here and around in some of our city properties, but the Florida Redevelopment Association, um, chose Smitty's Wings as the project of the year. And because of COVID and what's going on now, we would not be able to attend the conference that we normally will be attending, uh, in the upcoming weeks, uh, there won't be a physical presentation, uh, just yet, but Smitty's is on the brink of doing their ribbing cutting to open their doors. And I, I would like at that time to, uh, you know, make that announcement to the community, uh, and hopefully we'll have the plaque or whatever it is, uh, to, to welcome, um, and to, uh, thank them, uh, for getting this award. And, um, I just wanted to share with you all, can you imagine? We have the project of the year of all the CRAs of the state of Florida, right here in our city, um, on the Sis Trunk corridor. And I know we all had our, our differences or opinions about what we thought. When you, when you think of a project and you say, some of us would use the words, uh, subsidized, some would say, um, a handout, some would say incentive, which is the word that we do use, uh, for the CRA. But I think this is a, this is, we should just really look at ourselves and what we have done here to make this project what it is. And even though we might have had differences, but we got there and when we do this, look at what happens. And I look at the Sis Trunk Market, I look at the Fuse Group, which they have been doing work on their buildings, um, since the last commission, I believe, and the only tenant they have, the only tenant they have is the city of Fort Lauderdale CRA. The other buildings aren't even painted yet and not knocking their project. I think when they get there, they'll be fine, but attracting the right businesses and restaurants to this area is very, very, very difficult. Sis Trunk Market should have opened in October, um, last October. It just opened, soft opening, but a great project. It had many hurdles from parking, uh, to overages, but we got there because this commission, you know, said, hey, let's move forward with it and, and, and we did it. So again, I want to commend us what we're doing and I can go on and on and on with other projects and these projects are giving dollar amounts and we just awarded one, uh, in the CRA, that was M two. And we awarded the project itself, um, two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but then we put three hundred and twenty-five thousand in the car for just in cases overages. And this is a restaurant and in my experience in construction, restaurants are more expensive than any other projects that we might do on, on the corridor. Um, and we require each and every, um, developer or applicant to put ten percent down, to put ten percent down for the corruption of these projects. Smitty's Wings is the only project, the only project we have approved that has put forty percent in, about to open the door, got project of the year. And there's some, um, some things I shared with city manager and his staff, uh, of some changes that occurred even after we went in, Mayor, and, and made the changes with the roof and other things that Vice Mayor pointed out so, so, um, analytically, um, but there are things that go on and on and on, on a time clock, like architects, for example, like lawyers, every time you talk to them, there's additional charge. Um, so there's my architect fees that have been, uh, on the clock with this project, uh, ongoing and some other fees from the contractor and the city manager has a, um, a number to it and I just wanted to share that, uh, with you all and, 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 and ask us to revisit it, to look at these change orders and look at what we have done here with this project and many others like here, um, and see if we can get this project over the goal line. The numbers the city manager has, I, cause I gave them to him to go back and bet and see if there's any other avenues, but we have done, in my opinion, an outstanding job with the projects, whether it's on the west end, uh, with the infield housing, uh, the, uh, on the corridor, whether it's Flagler Village or whether it's anywhere where these CRA parameters, um, exist. I think we've done a great job. I think there's some, uh, inequities, uh, but we'd have to look at that project by project. But I think overall, we've done a great job and I'm, I'm asking, uh, us at this time, if we go back and revisit this project, that is, project of the year and see if we can, uh, deal with these additional change orders. And I guarantee you, um, if you go and ask any of your restaurant friends, uh, Mayor, Commissioner Maritas, any one of us, and you'll find out that even in your kitchen alone, there's upwards of two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars just in equipment. And as I have indicated historically here in my district, our restaurants last. I know that restaurants traditionally in the first year fail, sixty percent of them, but the ones in my district have been around since I was a kid and they will be around, um, as long as we can keep them open, the doors open, um, the Bettys, where you quite frequent, um, uh, Mayor. These are just traditional restaurants that have been handed down from family member to family member and sometimes you get caught in an area where some people don't even want to come and do what you do occasionally, Mayor, is have a seat at Bettys because they're, they're afraid. And that's the definition of the CRA, it was slumming blight and you gotta develop your way out of that. And now with our efforts and the efforts of the previous commission, we are at the tipping point where people want to invest here, people want to come here and the community that's there now has always supported its, its local businesses. And you can see that with Irish, Bee Gees, uh, Bettys, uh, the seafood place, uh, on, on fifteenth and other restaurants want to come to the area. Historically, they prevail. And I think we have a jewel here, I'm asking us to revisit this and look at it. I would like for the city manager, I talked to the city auditor, all of them and asked their, their, uh, advice and professional opinion, and I don't think any one of them frowned at this project. So at this time, I would ask John Herbst just to, uh, to give his, his, uh, opinion. Uh, city manager, what's your take on this? And, uh, I want to congratulate you all for having the project of the year out of all of the CRAs in the state of Florida, um, from the Florida Redevelopment Association. Great job, Mayor and colleagues.
Well, Commissioner, I'll, I'll echo that. I've been involved with, uh, the FRA for many, many years now, both, uh, in my time here with the, uh, city of Fort Lauderdale and in my previous history up with the city of Jacksonville. It's a great organization, as you say, it, it represents the CRAs from around the state. And every year they highlight those projects from small cities and from large cities in different categories, whether it be planning documents, uh, redevelopment, as you're talking about here, new buildings, uh, give you example, the I-PIC up in, uh, up, uh, north of us was one of the projects that won in Delray. So I mean, again, outstanding new building projects. So, you know, those are the kinds of things we're competing with and against and, you know, for us to, for us to win this is, in terms of redevelopment, huge. I mean, I think it's a really good, a testament to, uh, you know, to the collaboration and the partnership that CRAs are created to do. You know, there are areas that will never see the kind of investment that they should because they've been historically blighted, they've been, uh, the victim of systemic racism and the only way to attract investment dollars into these communities is for the city to put its shoulder to the wheel. And I think we've seen that with our CRA and I think this is just, uh, another example that, uh, that demonstrates how successful those partnerships and collaborations are working. And, and to your point, I would agree with you, you know, I've got some experience in the restaurant business, I've been in it myself and, uh, the cost of equipping a kitchen, as you say, is, is on average anywhere from three to five hundred thousand dollars, depending on the size of your kitchen, you know, whether you're doing takeouts, a large restaurant or what have you, but it's, uh, it's definitely a huge undertaking. And I think, uh, I think a lot of people underestimate that when they go into the business, just, uh, just what the cost of equipment, what the cost of build out is gonna be. And it's particularly difficult when you're doing the kinds of projects we do in the CRA, which are reuse and, and adaptation. You know, it's a lot easier if you're coming in with a piece of dirt and you're building a brand new building on it. Those kinds of costs are much more predictable, but when you're doing renovation and reuse of older historic properties, um, my brother's a general contractor and he'll tell you, you never know what you're gonna find until you open the wallet. And that's so true with a lot of what we deal with. So that's one of the things, as we're looking at projects right now, I, I've been, um, I've been very strong on making sure that the applicants have enough contingency funds and working capital to, to deal with exactly the situation that you, uh, made mention of, and that's being prepared for those unexpected events. It's, it's a, a, a real risk and a very common occurrence in these kinds of projects. So it's something that I think we, we need to be prepared for as an organization when we do this, that we're going to have to expect that that's gonna come up because we can't anticipate everything. I, I hope that addresses your, your, your concern.
Well, John, my concern is that, um, funding requests came from the applicant twice here and we twice asked you, um, uh, first time we said, you, are you comfortable with the budget? Are you comfortable with contingency amount? Are you comfortable with the potential for cost overruns? And you said yes, and then it came back again wanting more money and we asked you the same questions and now you're saying something that really, I, I can't believe you're saying, you're saying that, uh, well, yeah, I may have told you this in the past, but you know, maybe I wasn't right and maybe I wasn't right the second time either. And now, uh, I mean, are we being asked for more money here today? Is that what this?
I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what he's asking, Mayor, and, and I want you to, um, I, I mean, I, I. I caution you in that this, this solely came from me, um, from my heart and my desire. Uh, uh, the applicant had nothing to do with this and what I thought about, you know, how hard we fought, um, uh, and also, uh, looked at from the time that we made that last request, there were building inspectors from our city that came in and, and required additional things. And each time you make a change to what the architect of record drew two years ago, um, change it with the architect on the drawings, resubmit it and redo it. That's what I think, um, the city auditor was alluding to and I worked in this business and in a renovation, those things can happen, even after we sat there, we talked about three items at that particular time. Uh, and I don't want to rehash this as, as a debate or argument, I just put it out there, um, we can go up or down, don't want to make it, you know, uh, a big issue, but I'm just saying, whereas I went back and started looking at other projects, trying to compare it apple to apple, everybody else was asked for, to do ten percent of the construction cost. This applicant has done forty percent. Forty percent, not including his initial investment in purchasing the building.
Mayor, is this an agenda item?
No, it's not an agenda item.
What are we?
It's a personal privilege, but, but I was talking before you interrupted.
What are we doing now?
All I'm doing is making.
This is not an agenda item, this is not appropriate now, we can agenda, put this on the agenda. Okay, all right, so, all right, thank you, Commissioner McKenzie, I think you, yeah, we appreciate the presentation.
So all I was saying to us is this, 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 look at it and even with the one we approved tonight, I, I think the dollar amount is gonna come back to us, um, uh, after you get into, to the nuts and bolts of it. And it's not about Smitty's Wings, it's about every project that we try to incentivize, uh, uh, for this, for our CRA.
All right, great, thank you. Is there any further business of the CRA?
Well, we didn't hear from the city manager either.
Well, I don't know.
As I, as I requested for my, um.
I'm happy to weigh in just, just very, very quickly as the item, uh, closes. Um, yeah, hard to follow, John, uh, you know, great work for this project. Um, I'm happy to, uh, with, with Clarence's assistance and that of our attorney's office, we'll, we'll take, if there's something to take a look at, we'll take a look at it and, uh, uh, make a recommendation and, and bring it to the, the commission for consideration. Um, and, uh, I can definitely say that we'll be willing to look into it and, uh, if there's something there that we need to bring back, we, we will.
All right, I just want to make one comment, I happen to have.
And, and thank you, Mayor, for the time you gave me.
All right, yes, certainly. Um, I happen to have a couple of clients who are in the restaurant business and they tell me you can't even give restaurant equipment away right now. Um, it's so cheap to be buying restaurant equipment on the open market, so, um, anyway, all right, so is there any further business of the, of the, uh, CRA board?
There is not, just a reminder again that, uh, elected officials, please fall off this call and log into the, uh, call that you have in your inbox and, uh, we'll be joined there next.
All right, speaking adjourned, thank you.